Councilmember Verisong?
Present.
Councilmember Whitstein? Mayor Parham?
Present.
I make a motion to excuse Melissa Whitstein? Or is she's actually gonna be?
She's attending remotely.
Can't see her on my screen, so.
All right, now move on to the acceptance of agenda and urgency items.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, can I just chime in for a minute?
Sure.
First of all, I did want to announce for the council and the public that Melissa Whitstein is appearing remotely today under the just pause exception of AB 2449. Due to her absence, unofficial business for the city of Weed, she attended the Cal Cities Conference. And then I just wanted to clarify that when you called this meeting to order, we called, there's both a special and regular meetings that are beginning at this time. And would suggest that at the acceptance of the agenda section, you identify where on the regular meeting agenda you'd like to take up the special meeting item, which is a task order for the Lincoln Heights project. And then we would seek a motion to accept the agenda as amended, identifying where we're going to take that item up for business on the regular agenda.
So we will add the special meeting item in under new business, under council business. And that will go in before item A.
We would just need a motion to accept as amended with the special meeting item above item A on regular business.
I make a motion to accept the agendaized item?
I'd actually like to make a friendly motion to remove item C under regular business for public safety. The request from Weed High School to close Main Street for the homecoming parade has been withdrawn due to weather. Okay, so we have amended motion, a second, to accept the agenda with the added special item meeting and removing item C for public safety. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And before I vote, mine is aye. However, I would like to note that I am currently a single occupant inside of a hotel room at the Cal Cities, and that there is no one over the age of eighteen that is present with me, and it will remain that way. If it changes, I will notify the council.
So noted.
And we do need, all roll call votes, all votes need to be by roll call this evening due to the question of Whitstein's appearance by.
All right, we'll move on with the roll call vote.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Councilmember Palphini?
Aye.
Councilmember Verisong?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstein?
Aye.
Mayor Parham?
Aye. Motion carries. With unanimous consent. A non-agenda public comment, this is a point in time for anybody, not just here in the audience here in Weed, but anybody that is down at the Cal Cities Conference that would wish to make a comment for anything not on the agenda, now is the time. We have one in the audience here, so we'll start with the people present before we move on to our remote viewers.
Yes, my name is Barbara Hakedon, I live in Weed. I was here last month, and I will be here every month, asking what the status of the library building is, if you've received any offers on that property.
So currently to date, we have not received any offers for the building.
Okay. Any movement in relocating the library?
There have been a few inquiries that we have made, as the city staff have made, I should correct myself, into looking at available locations, but nothing that has been decided at this time. It's not really an urgent item, as we have not received any offers for the existing surplus building.
So if you don't receive offers in a reasonable amount of time, would it be the right thing to do, to bring to the council to rescind that resolution that you passed in August to consider it surplus?
David, I'm going to defer to your legal advice on that.
Well, I'll have to look into that. It's probably not necessary to do that.
I'm sorry, I did not catch everything you said.
That would be something that we would be obligated to.
Okay, it seems like after a time, the community would be more relieved, I guess, to have that property no longer considered surplus property, because again, it performs a vital function for this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment here in the council chambers?
Good evening, everyone, I'm Sherri Smith, representing the Smith family. I am here to favorably request the approval of council for the ten feet variance at eleven sixty-five Grant Avenue, and this may be on the agenda at a later time, but wasn't sure if it was appropriate to speak up then or right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment here in the council chambers? Okay, do we have any public comment at any of our Zoom locations tonight? All right. Seeing as there are public comment there, we'll move on to council member announcements, meeting reports, and comments, and we'll begin with Councilmember Verisong.
Oh, hi. I just wanted to tell all the people that have came or have called about the fire and had offered their help and support with everything that has gone on. We have such a devastating fire, but I just want to say thank you to the fire department that did an incredible job, and people that had offered their helps and support has been overwhelming, but this is a, an issue that, that we, you know, that's going to bring us together and make our community stronger as we work together through this, this milestone that we're facing right now. So that's definitely my number one priority, is to clean up and get everything functioning again, and go on, you know, life. So I appreciate every single one that had called, text, email, that has been worried about myself and, and my place of business. Very much appreciated, so thank you.
All right, Councilmember Mizony?
I just want to kind of continue following what Pat said. I want to thank the fire department, the police department, Public Works, and the city staff for doing an outstanding job, and the allied agencies that helped come in here, because that could have got way worse than it did, and, and this is right in an area where there were a lot of homes here. So I sincerely mean that they did an outstanding job, so I couldn't say anything more than that, just that, you know, I applaud that. Thank you very much.
Mayor Proton, Palphini?
I'll piggyback on the same thing, and I want to make sure that our staff, from fire to police to just the regular staff, are applauded for all your efforts. I'd also really like to applaud all the assistance from the outlying communities that really lent a hand from Cal Fire to Mount Shasta, McLeod, Dunsmere, I don't know if we missed anybody, Wai Rika, Montague, Fort Jones brought an engine. So it was a significant response on our behalf, and it's big kudos to the whole Siskiyou County. I'll also just report briefly that we just, Darrell and I were at a Lola meeting last night, which is League of Local Agencies, and I'll let him finish that report.
Well, I think everybody said it best, so a huge thank you to the entire city staff, you know, as well as Cal Fire and all the volunteer fire departments that came in from around the county. What was a catastrophe, you know, could have been a tragedy, and so we thank everybody for knocking that fire down and keeping that from spreading. As someone who has lived through both the Bowls and Mill Fire, as well as a business owner who's building was spared because of the efforts, generally appreciate that personally, as well as publicly, for everything that everyone's done. It's a testament to the staff in the city and all the volunteers countywide. And again, I'll call on the seven people that watch us on YouTube and the people that are here, even if you don't live in Weed City proper, please volunteer, whether you're volunteering for your local fire department. It makes a difference, because all the local agencies from Gazelle to Grenada, Montague, Wai Rika, McLeod, everybody that I'm sure Chief will list off in detail during his report, those volunteers are what, you know, saved our community several times in supporting our staff, so please volunteer. We didn't indeed intend the Lola meeting last night in Fort Jones, I want to thank them for, for hosting, it was well put together. Again, I'm very proud to report that, you know, we as the city of Weed had a lot of positive progress, a lot of projects going on. It's always a source of pride to be able to give a mayor's report at those meetings for all the positive things that are happening in our community, to the rest of the county. I would also like to remind everybody that tomorrow's a groundbreaking ceremony at College of the Siskies, and that will be taking place at two o'clock, that's for the, the new student dorms that are coming in. We've seen an increase in attendance at College of the Siskies, and we're very much hoping that a partnership amongst our community, from our city and our businesses, will help bring more, you know, employable persons in the future, and give more opportunities to people in our community and surrounding areas. And last but not least, please attend the trunk retreat. Due to the fire, it's been moved from Main Street to the Weed High School, it'll be on October twenty-fifth. It's a great place to take your kids to go trick or treating in a safe environment, and there are thousands of people that come from around the area, so it'll be a fun time. So I hope everybody can join us for that. And now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any? Well, I guess I'll go through and read the consent agenda before we.
Did Councilmember Whitstein have a report?
I apologize, I'm looking around the room here, and I missed Councilmember Whitstein. Can you have a report for us, since you're down at Cal Cities?
Yeah, just a couple of things, I did get to attend the Chamber of Commerce dinner the other night, and it was a lovely event, it was a good speaker, good group of people, really enjoyed being there, and networking with those individuals who are keeping our commerce running in the city of Weed. Here at Cal Cities, it's been a whirlwind, would be the best way to describe it, and I have attended numerous classes and focused on economic development, so hopefully we can bring back some of those ideas to the city of Weed, and with our 501(c)(3), we can make some forward progress on the rehabilitation of downtown Weed.
Thank you. All right, well, I will go through the consent agenda now. The first item, item A, fire department by motion, council will consider resolution number twenty-nine dash twenty-two-five approving the fee structure for AB thirty-eight inspections. Item B, administration by motion, council will consider approving the two thousand twenty-five holiday closure schedule. Item C, Public Works by motion, council will consider resolution number thirty-dash twenty-two-five approving the contract for, to pace engineering for city engineer and authoring the city, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. Item D, Public Works by motion, council will consider resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-two-five approving on-call engineering pool list and authorizing the city manager to execute the contracts. Item E, Public Works by motion, council will consider resolution number thirty-two dash twenty-two-five approving the city of Weed policy for discontinuation of residential water service for non-payment. Item F, Finance by motion, council will consider resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-two-five establishing a credit card convenience fee. Item G, Police Department by motion, council will consider resolution number thirty-four dash twenty-two-five declaring K-9 Drax retired and approving surplus sale. Item H, City Clerk by motion, council will consider approval of the September eleventh two thousand twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Item I by motion, council will consider approving payment warrants dated September eleventh two thousand twenty-five through September twenty-fourth two thousand twenty-five, including any voided warrants and manual issued items totaling eight hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred forty dollars and twenty-three cents. And finally, item J by motion, council will consider approval and filing of the end-of-month report for September of two thousand twenty-five. Any discussion from the council members, present or remote, on the consent agenda?
I would like to remove, maybe David, you can help me, I would like to remove item number E and F, just for explanation to the people that are watching via Zoom, so that they know exactly what is going on with those two measures. Do we have to have it open for discussion, or can we just get a report? Is, is that sufficient?
Why don't you just pull those, and we'll, and we can have the staff report on those after, right after the consent agenda is completed.
Okay. Then I'd like to remove item E and F for, for a report from the staff.
Okay, I'll second that, to put items E and F under items removed for consent as regular business. And we will call for roll call vote. Unless there's any other discussion from the council on other items.
So we had a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, which is without, you know?
To accept the agenda as amended.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Public comment?
Do we have any public comment in the council chambers? Any public comment via Zoom?
No. Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Councilmember Palphini?
Yes.
Councilmember Verisong?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstein?
Yes.
Mayor Parham?
Aye. All right, motion carries, we will, the consent agenda with items E and F moved to be discussed and voted on separately.
So, yeah, and I believe that's the next item, is items removed from consent, so we can have.
Move on with item E now, Public Works by motion, council will consider resolution number thirty-two dash twenty-two-five approving the city of Weed policy for discontinuation of residential water service for non-payment, and we'll move on now to a staff report to explain that.
Mr. Mayor, permission to speak?
Of course.
Dustin Stanball, city manager, hello everyone, it's good to see y'all. My, the explanation for the, we had an issue where the front, when I, my first week or two here, the front office was having trouble executing a payment agreement for a constituent who needed extra time, and so upon my investigation, they didn't have a form for it. So all, all I'm doing is I updated, I did update the language of the policy, but I did not change, and I, I had updated the fees, because sixty, the fees they had were just, I just, I just made it blanket fees seventy-five and one-twenty-five, respectively, but the, the whole purpose was to add the form to the policy, so it would make it easier for front office staff to put someone on a payment arrangement. The other change I made is I would be the approving authority.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve it.
Well, do we have any public comments? We'll start with the council chamber, sorry, I miss that myself from time to time. Seeing as there is none, do we have any public comment over Zoom?
Nope.
Okay, so Ken, you're making a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the schedule for.
Item E?
Item E, which is, where'd it go?
Thirty-two, twenty-five?
Thirty, twenty-five, what was it, seventy-five, twenty-five?
Resolution number thirty-two dash twenty-two-five?
Yeah, my, my, I must have put my elbow on my Siskiyou. Sorry. Sorry, guys, I feel dumb now. Resolution number thirty-two, twenty-two-five approving the city Weed policy for discontinuation of residential water service for non-payment?
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Well, Ken motioned, and Councilmember Whitstein seconded. So now we'll move on to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Councilmember Palphini?
Here, yes.
Councilmember Verisong?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstein?
Aye.
Mayor Parham?
Aye. Motion carries. And item F, Finance by motion, council will consider resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-two-five establishing credit card convenience fee.
Mr. Mayor, permission to speak?
Certainly.
Thank you. So this is in response to staff reports that we were not collecting collect credit card fees, and especially after our meeting with the auditor and looking at our balances, we need to start covering the cost for services we provide, and one of those is credit cards for, we, we don't, we weren't collecting credit card fees for anything, so in a way, in, in an effort to try to tighten our shot group or flow, covered costs that we are incurring for providing credit card services, all this resolution is doing is, is allowing staff, whether, whether it be for business, or whether it would be for business licenses, or police fines, or whatever, it just blanket across the city's operations, we now, I'm requesting council approval that we collect the credit card fees that we incur when, when customers use their credit cards. Or debit cards, or that service, because we do get charged a pretty substantial amount to, for each transaction.
What's, what fee are we talking about?
It's, I, I originally proposed three-point-five percent, but when David reviewed it, he's like, no, we can't do that, so it's just whatever fees that we incur for each credit card transaction, it depends on the service that we use to do that. It's, it's, it blanketly allows us to just go, uh, uh, charge what we incur, the bills, the charges that the city incurred for each transaction. So if it's seventy-five cents, we can collect seventy-five cents, if it's a dollar fifty for processing the credit card change, it's a dollar fifty. We cannot incur, we cannot collect more than what we were charged. But it's just a way to collect, it's just a, right now, we're eating the cost for each credit card transaction, and those add up over time.
Well, I, I, I agree with it, but it's kind of fluctuating, seventy-five cents, or maybe a dollar.
Well.
We don't have.
Those are just, those are just examples, I was told that I couldn't collect a fee legally, it has to be for the amount that we were billed, that we were charged, nothing more, nothing less.
And I believe that's automatically reported when we, when we do the charge on the card.
Yes.
Like the bank or wherever, it's kind of.
Each, each credit card.
Right.
Charges a different amount, so that's all this amounts to.
Jill?
Yeah, if I can just, if you'd like some more clarification, we, we are only allowed to charge for the actual service charge that we're getting, so it, some credit card companies might charge three and a half percent, some might charge five percent. We're, we are legally authorized to pass on the actual costs that we are incurring, whether that's three and a half percent or five percent. The question, as a practical matter, whether we can implement that is a different question, and if it's, turns out to be easier to just do a blanket charge for everything, then we're going to have to essentially choose the lowest percentage and pass that on, because otherwise, we may be requiring someone whose card only required a three and a half percent charge to pay five percent, and that would be problematic, and so we don't want to do that.
Okay, I make a mo.
All right. Do we have any public comment? Okay, how about public over Zoom? Crickets.
Can I ask one, can I ask one question, sorry? Do we know, and when we're selecting these services, do we know the percentage of the service fee for what we're selecting?
It's usually in the contracts.
Okay, so, for instance, I know that, that one of the things that we're headed towards is at least a more integrated system with our website, so will there be selection by you as city manager to make sure that we are passing on only the least amount of service charge to our constituents?
Yes, and that's, that's essentially the why David made the correction that he did, is that, that's what the resolution instructs me to do.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Oh, you're fine.
Not at all, that's the whole purpose of asking these questions, so it's good that we all understand this, and the public hears it. All right, any other questions from council?
Um, I, I do, can I ask the finance director her opinion on this, or more information on it?
Yeah, it's pretty standard, anytime you're paying a governmental entity, for instance, if you go to the, to pay your Siskiyou County property taxes online, they will charge you a fee for using a credit card, and a lesser fee, I believe, for doing a, a, a transfer from your bank account, so it, DMV charges it, it, it's very standard. As far as the implementation, we'll, Dustin and I will discuss that, I, I believe it would, well, we can discuss that, you know, doing probably the lowest blanket rate would probably be the easiest implementation, as having to calculate different rates for each individual transaction would be pretty cumbersome, so I, I assume that, that we would probably implement like the lowest rate.
That's kind of where I was trying to get, okay. That's fine, I'm good with it.
Well, kudos to staff for finding that issue and getting it resolved, because businesses have been charging that since the inception of credit card fees, so.
So with that, I'll make a, a motion for the approval of resolution number thirty-three two oh two-five establishing credit card convenience fees.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, we'll move on to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Councilmember Palphini?
Yes.
Councilmember Verisong?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstein?
Aye.
Mayor Parham?
Aye. All right, motion carries by unanimous consent. We will now move on to presentations and proclamations, our first item A is the audit presentation from Charles Pillion, presenting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three twenty-four audit for adoption.
Mr. Mayor, Charlie had to leave, he, he couldn't stay for the presentation tonight, so I'll go ahead and present the audit if you don't mind.
Of course.
So you should have a copy of the audit in your, in your packet. This is audit for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. We were a single audit this year, which we were not in the prior year due to our. Um, it, we were a single audit this year, which we were not in the prior year due to our, um, mainly um, the water bypass project was a big um, federal, federally funded project that we had that um, put us over so that we were required to do a single audit. Um, I'm pleased to announce that um, we went from in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two four findings on our audit to um, just one finding left on our audit, which is not resolved. And um, that find, that finding is primarily due to me, just lack of time with the implementation um, and data entry for the software conversion. I just didn't get through the, the general ledger like I really wanted to. Um, the single audit is actually due to be uploaded to the federal audit clearinghouse um, the last day of March um, following the end of the fiscal year, so it would have been March of twenty, twenty-five. Um, so we were a few months behind on that. Um, Charlie called me and said, Jill, we need to start the audit. And I said, yeah, I'm not really ready, but yeah, we need to do it. So um, that is the reason that um, we still have that audit finding. I was expecting it um, and hoping um, that we won't have it for twenty-four, twenty-five, which that audit will um, be starting soon, because we are a, a little behind on audits, so we're again playing a little bit of catch up. Um, but um, pleased with what Charlie um, had to say. And we had our um, our audit meeting, our ad hoc audit committee meeting prior to this meeting. Um, he was very positive, um, happy that from our progression in making things better. Um, I'm, I'm pleased about that. He did point out under um, Ken, uh, council member Palpheny had questioned him on um, the status of where we are financially. Um, and we know that we're underwater in the general fund. Um, the end number for twenty-three, twenty-four came out uh, negative three hundred and something thousand for that fiscal year. What I was not aware of, and this is due primarily to the pension liability that is calculated during the audit, which threw the water fund into a substantial negative position. Um, so we, we know that we're due for a rate study and um, we are, and I'm, I'm going to let um, but our city manager elaborate more on that, but we're, we are implementing um, a new method of calculating our rates that's um, a little more flexible. It's, it's not going to project five years out, we'll be able to do it on a year by year basis. But I'm, I'm going to leave that to Mr. Stembach to elaborate a little bit more on that. We hope we can um, get our rates adjusted to where they need be, need to be. Um, but all in all, um, very pleased with the audit. Um, thankful to my staff who helped. Um, it, it's a lot of work on staff, it's, it, there's a lot of um, things that they need to pull out of the files for Charlie to review. Um, so Christina and Jamie, thank you for all your help on that. Um, one comment he did make um, that was a finding on the prior year was um, the grant files. And he's very pleased that the grant files are much cleaner than what they were in the prior years. Um, so um, yeah, I think overall, I, we're definitely making progress in, in getting our audit cleaned up. Um, is there anything that, that you'd like to add, council member Palpheny?
I would probably just kind of repeat what you've said. It's about as positive as I've seen Charlie in quite some time, as far as our audits are concerned. The one finding uh, that you talked about. It's, it's an internal thing, and in other words, it's, it's just how you registered in the numbers and stuff. But it's, that's well within our control. It's nothing, it's something that's out there that we can't manage. Uh, I would also say that based on some of my questions, I would say that the council, we know our direction that we need to go, do. And we're pretty much spot on, I believe, and with Jill's help and Dustin's help. Um, I, I think we're, we're going to be a little bit more forward and a little bit more positive in the future, so. I, 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 it was probably the best audit we have been too, as far as being positive anyway. So that's, it was a good one.
I agree. Uh, Mr. Stembach, anything you'd like to add?
Sure, uh, first off, Mr. Mayor, I want to congratulate Jill and her team. I'm new here, but I've also been in the game long enough to know when we've got a competent team. Uh, just looking through the numbers and the fishing I've done through them in my first four weeks here, they have done a lot of cleanup. And I want to make sure that Jill and Jamie and Christina get the recognition they deserve. I'm very proud of them. Um, we've still got a lot of work to do. Uh, I'm now fully aware of the fiscal situation. Uh, while we've had a great audit, we've got a lot of things we got to do. We got to cut down on, on waste internally. Um, we've got to make sure we uh, improve our processes internally. And I'm, that some of these resolutions and, and, and uh, things that I'm presenting you tonight as a part of the effort to start improving our financial position, improving our operational efficiency. And it starts with the little wins, it starts with the little wins, you know, you've already blessed me with a strong staff. And so I've got the pieces I need to make it happen now. It's just me working with them to improve our operational efficiency and improve our fiscal viability. I'm very, I'm very blessed to be here, I'm very proud of the staff that uh, you've given me the privilege of overseeing. And I think that you're going to have an even better audit next year as we tighten our shot group even more. Did I miss anything, Jill?
Um, no, I just didn't know if you wanted to talk about uh, what we're going to be doing with two eighteen?
Yeah, so uh, I uh, I was approached by a firm called Waterworth. And um, David has to uh, not comment on this, because I found out we share their attorney. Um, but uh, Waterworth has, Jill has been with me on these meetings. We have had, what, three or four different meetings with their reps, just going over the tools that they have to offer, their pricing and all of that stuff. And uh, they're, for a three-year contract, I think, I don't have the exact numbers, but it's about seventeen thousand dollars. And what we get in return for that, I split it between the water and the wastewater funds. What we're going to get in return for that is expertise. Uh, they're going to show, they have a, they have a model that they already, that they're going to walk us through how to do the rate in- increases. Um, with their, with their expertise and what they bring to the table, uh, we should be able to talk to them whenever we need to. Um, whenever we need, we have a project coming up, they can help us do a rate analysis to incorporate new projects as they come up, as opposed to waiting until the five-year mark. And so it's more of a dynamic approach to uh, it's more of a dynamic approach to rate analysis. It allows us to do real time as quickly as we can with two eighteen. Um, to do updates, to account for changes in the environment, so that we can keep our water and uh, wastewater funds healthy. And it, uh, so I'm really excited. Jill is mainly the person I rely on to sign off on things like that, and she's excited. So uh, we're, I'm looking forward to working with them, we have a kickoff on next week. But uh, we will present more information as it becomes available. Did I cover it well, Jill?
Yeah, I think you did, I think the main point is that it's a little more fluid, um, as Dustin, Mr. Stembach stated, that we will be able to adjust the rates on a yearly basis, based on um, if we, if we have unknowns come up, like we have a major sewer um, renovation that we need to do, we can plug that number in. And based on the data, it, it compiles all our data and it will spit out, you know, this is what your rate needs to be to cover um, these expenditures and, and future needs. Um, it, it's very dynamic.
And we're excited, because they'll also walk us through the entire process, the two eighteen process, et cetera. That's also included in the price, so it's not just, hey, we're going to do your rates, you're on your own unless you want to charge bill us more. It's, it, it, uh, all of that's included in the price. Now, the trade-off is Jill and I will have to do a lot of the heavy lifting on our end, but it seems like a good trade-off if the tool's as good as they say it is.
Well, kudos to you, Jill, and your team for all the continuous improvement. Um, my, my three short years in this DS, I've seen nothing but significant improvements in our financial status and how we report and track our finances, and that shows in your audits, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, we have any discussion or public comment on the presentation? Anything from our Zoom members?
No, no Zoom.
All right.
Just, I just need you, I just need a motion to adopt the audit, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt finance uh.
This, this was not agenda, it's as an action item.
It's not, okay.
Yeah, just a presentation.
Just a presentation.
All right, our next presentation is item B, uh, First Five Siskiyou Proclamation for Read Across Siskiyou twenty, twenty-five, and we have someone here to present to us.
I'm Jean Travison with First Five Siskiyou, and we're bringing before the council our proclamation for our eighteenth annual Read Across Siskiyou. Isn't that would be wonderful, Mr. Mayor, if you'd please read that? Thank you.
Our Siskiyou County Proclamation for the Eighteenth Annual Read Across Siskiyou twenty, twenty-five event, sponsored by First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission. Whereas the ultimate goal of the First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission is to all of Siskiyou's children from prenatal through five years of age will be healthy, ready to learn, and supported and safe nurturing families and communities. And whereas children in Siskiyou County from prenatal through five years of age have a successful start in life through daily reading with supportive and nurturing families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas early literacy, literacy is the foundation for academic, social, emotional, and economic success. And whereas First Five Siskiyou, in partnership with Siskiyou County Library, dedicates one day each year to promote early literacy, but providing the same titled book to be read by guest readers to children in various preschools, kindergartens, childcare settings, libraries, and online events throughout Siskiyou County on the same day, and provide each child with a copy of that book to take home. Therefore, the City of Weed hereby proclaims November twelfth, twenty, twenty-five, as the eighteenth anniversary of Read Across Siskiyou. And be it that this body enthusiastically endorses daily reading, singing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for healthy development and lifelong success.
Thank you very much, and everybody has a copy of this year's book, which is Pugasaurus.
And thank you for that, uh, this is one that my toddlers don't have, so they'll get to read that a little earlier than November twelfth.
That's wonderful, thank you so much, thank you for your time.
Thank you for everything you do. All right, our next item is the Mayor's Proclamation, October sixteenth, twenty, twenty-five, as the Great Shakeout Earthquake Preparedness Day.
Mr. Mayor, I uh, thank you for agreeing to do this. I have, uh, I have nominated the city to participate, city staff and I to participate in the Great Shakeout that is, that is going on across California. I believe it's on ten sixteen, twenty, twenty-five, at ten sixteen AM. All staff has submitted me their reports. Um, I would hope that the community will participate with us. The whole goal of the program is to, of course, increase earthquake awareness, because we're in California, but also to make sure that we collaborate with our neighbors and uh, work together and, and as a part of this awareness. So it's just a, it's just something that I thought would be good for us to do, this to, so we know what to do in case it happens. And it also i- is a collaborative effort uh, that I hope the rest of, I know the College of the Siskies is doing it, Siskies is doing it, but um, it would be, it would be awesome if more, if more of the community would participate with us. Thank you.
Proclaiming October sixteenth, twenty, twenty-five, as Great Shakeout Earthquake Preparedness Day and recognizing the city's particip- participation in the Great Shakeout Drill. Whereas the City of Weed recognizes that earthquakes pose a significant and ongoing risk to the health, safety, and welfare of residents, visitors, businesses, and public facilities in Siskiyou County and throughout Northern California. And whereas preparedness actions taken before an earthquake, such as securing heavy objects, maintaining emergency supplies, and practicing appropriate protective actions have been shown to reduce injuries, loss of life, and damage to property. And whereas the Great Shakeout is an annual worldwide earthquake drill that promotes the life, safety action, quote, drop, cover, and hold on, and encourages whole community preparedness at home, work, school, and in the field. And whereas International Shakeout Day is observed on the third Thursday of October, and this year falls on Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty, twenty-five. And whereas the City of Weed has registered to participate and will conduct a citywide drill on October sixteenth, twenty, twenty-five at ten sixteen AM Pacific Time, engaging employees and offices, public counters, field operations, and essential services. And whereas the city will also encourage households, neighborhood groups, businesses, faith communities, and nonprofit partners to participate in the drill, and to take steps to improve individual and organizational readiness. And whereas the city's participation advances community resilience by identifying hazards, strengthening communications and accountability procedures, and promoting accessible guidance for people with disabilities and others with access and functional needs. Now therefore, I, Daryl Parham, Mayor of the City of Weed, California, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty, twenty-five, as the Great Shakeout Earthquake Preparedness Day in the City of Weed. And I call upon all residents, businesses, organizations, and visitors to join the ten sixteen AM drill to practice drop, cover, and hold on, to secure hazards in their spaces and to maintain emergency supplies and plans. I further recognize and commend the city departments and partner agencies for leading by example and for promoting a culture of readiness and resilience. All right, we have, that concludes our presentations and proclamations for the evening. We'll now move on to public hearing. Uh, council will consider the planning commission's recommended changes to the Weed Municipal Code eighteen dot two four dot three hundred and hold a public hearing to consider introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number four eight seven, two thousand twenty-five.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, before you tonight, um, is modifications to the Weed Municipal Code, chapter eighteen, twenty-four, three hundred. Uh, this is in regards to temporary storage containers. Uh, because it's a zoning change, it does require two public hearings. The Planning Commission held one um, in, this is October, so August. Um, and did recommend the changes for council to review and for adoption. What uh, the modifications are doing is this temp- temporary storage containers for construction storages um, only would be allowed, excuse me, would be allowed to be um, reviewed and approved for over the counter instead of going um, before the Planning Commission. They would have a time limit on them, they would have to follow all of the same um, conditions of approval as far as graffiti. Um, but they would be tied to the building permits, they would not be issued until a, a valid building permit is issued, and final occupancy would not be able to be given to the construction project until the temporary storage container is removed.
All right.
That would just come in with their business permit.
That would come in with their building permit, correct? Yep, correct.
All right, well, we'll open the public hearing now. Uh, do we have any proponents to speak other than the staff report? Do we have any opponents to speak in the public hearing? All right, we'll move on to council member questions. So I have a question in regards to, will this change the process for conditional use permits for existing structures that don't require building permit? Or will it just be the same process as before?
This is in regards to storage containers. So if you are wanting to get a storage container permanently placed at a, um, in, in the proper zones that, that we allow.
That's still.
Um, you still have to go before the Planning Commission. This only changes it to where if it is a construction project for a hu- a house. Um, we do have a few, um, I think Habitat for Humanity and one other contractor has applied for conditional use permits um, and went before the Planning Commission and were approved. So if there is a contractor out there that's, that's building um, a home or a commercial property coming in and building a commercial building, they would be able to just apply over the counter um, with staff, and the planning director does review and approve those.
Excellent. Great streamlining for the process.
And I have a question, um, if I could, Mayor.
Of course.
This does allow control by the building inspector as to if there's no movement, and there seems to be six, eight, nine months in between. six, eight, nine months in between movement of a project going forward.
The that was, yeah, that that was adopted last month or the month before as far as the there's a process for the building permits and a streamlining for the for the inspection process and a timeline. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from council members? Councilmember Wetstein, I want to forget you out there in cyberspace.
No questions.
All right, any other further discussion?
Make a motion?
We do.
I'll make a motion to okay or pass four eight seven, 2025. For the first reading.
Okay, sounds like we have a second and we'll do a vote by roll call, please.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Councilmember Palpheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Verasan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetstein?
Aye.
Mayor Parham?
Aye. All right, motion carries. Want to move on to council business and our first will be our special meeting item as changed at the beginning of the meeting. This is a public works by motion. Council will consider resolution number 37 dash 2025 approving pace task order number 2025 dash O2 regarding Lincoln Heights Complete Streets Project Plan and authorize the city manager to execute.
So council, this task order will allow Pace to attend public meetings. They'll be able to complete planning documentation and also 30% design drawings for a CDBG grant that we're going after to help improve the road condition, road improvements and curb and gutter is what we're looking at. There will be public meetings. We will be handing out notices to the residents in that area to attend the public meetings. This is a pretty broad grant. We did that for a reason because we want community input on what they would like to see over there. We have an idea, but we really trying to get the community input. This will also, of course, we still have that USDA grant out there where we are doing the roads, the curb and gutter on the east side of 97. And also the city will be forking out money, of course, to do road improvements over there. So that that will be still taking place.
Excellent. Well, I commend staff for the public import portion. I think it's great that we're getting the the public to be actively engaged with what they're looking for or at least be a part of the process. So. And for the seven YouTube followers, if any of you are in the Lincoln Heights area, please tell your friends and neighbors to attend those meetings. All right, do we have any public comment? None from the council chambers? Anything on Zoom?
Have we said, I would like to ask one question.
Of course.
Have we said a date yet?
No, we have not.
Okay. I didn't hear a date, so I go, I might have missed that in my little brain wandering.
Once I find out, I'll notify everyone.
Okay, I believe we have to approve this before we can schedule the meetings.
Okay.
Any any other questions from council?
I make a motion to approve resolution. We asked for public comment?
We did.
Okay. Approved resolution number 35 dash 2025 proving a transfer of as public necessity and convenience. I think that's the one or did I miss?
So I'll make a I'll make a friendly amendment to correct it to resolution number 37, 2025.
Thank you.
Second with the friendly amendment.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and then we'll move on to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Councilmember Palpheny?
Yes.
Councilmember Verasan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetstein?
Yes.
Mayor Parham?
Aye. All right, motion carries. Our next item is item A, Health and Safety. By motion, council reconsider requests for transfer of liquor licenses, public necessity and convenience for off sale type 21 alcoholic beverages at 175 East Vista Drive and adopt either resolution number 35, 2025, upholding the decision to deny or resolution number 36 dash 2025 approving the transfer as public necessity and convenience. And we'll begin, well, let's begin with the staff report and then we'll hear from the proponent.
So since the August council meeting, Chief Mayberry has spoken to a California ABC representative who stated that the website had incorrect census data. They said a necessity and convenience decision would be appropriate as the city of Weed was beyond the census track recommendation. ABC also told Chief Mayberry that they would contact the applicant and work on correcting the website. Also, there are currently four ABC license holders within 600 feet of the proposed location with two more with business development in the early spring of 2026. As of yesterday, the location of 175 East Vista is still operating as an e-ticket bus stop for the Fronteras Del Norte Bus Line. And as of this morning, somebody could still purchase bus tickets from that location. So ultimately, approval of the license could create potential issues with the liquor store being an unofficial bus depot as well.
Okay. All right, and we'll hear from the proponent.
Hi, good evening, council members and fellow community members. My name is Valerie. I am the sole operator and owner of the Weed Liquor Depot LLC. I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of my business proposal today and for allowing me to be here in order to give you my reasonings for why I think this business would be a great asset to our community. I do want it. I did you want, could I touch up on some things that Mister Mister Clofren, that's it.
We throw you on that one.
Yeah. I it, I don't know where the information came for the bus stop, but as of now, it's not operating at all. Fronteras on North, they does stop at the Pilot gas station. I do know that for a fact because I've taken it before and they don't stop at the restaurant, nor can they purchase tickets from the restaurant. They have to buy them online. So I just wanted to say that.
And I can comment on that. Chief Mayberry has asked Pilot if they had a an agreement to stop and to stop there at Pilot and Pilot has denied that they want the buses to stop at Pilot. So I don't know if there's an agreement or if they just stop.
There's no agreement. I'm pretty sure they just stop, but they do not stop at the location that I'm talking about today and they do not buy tickets from there either. Just wanted to clarify that one.
No, it's an it's an e-ticket and I believe they print out that we have here. There's a stop that stops at a pickup at 7 a.m. and pickup at 6:30 p.m. as well.
Sounds about right, yes.
Got to ask a question. Does it have an address of where it's stopping and picking up at?
It does not. I don't. I believe you actually have to purchase the ticket to see the address. The ticket was for $108, $113 and I didn't go ahead and purchase that. It didn't show an address though, no.
But it has to show an address when you're buying that ticket, right? To where you, because you wouldn't know where to go.
I would believe so, yes.
Okay, and then the other thing that I want to touch on also was there is there is four liquor licenses that he had spoken about in South Weed. Three of them are type 20, which is beer and wine licenses only. And then the one person that does have a type 21 license in the South Weed Business District is they all they sell are the like the small, I had brought in that little Red Bull last time for for your guys's example, just to see what it was, but they only sell those small bottles of plastic liquor and I believe they have no more than 10 different brand names of it as well. And then another thing about the other type 20 licenses is that they are mostly the basic name brands. You got the Keystone, Coors Light, Corona, different brands like that that you can typically find almost anywhere. I plan on carrying more of like the local distilled distilleries and then also a lot of the local beers. I currently also have some artisans and different craft people from town that I've been working with in order to get their brands and their names and their products on a broader audience, just from the travelers and just the foot traffic that is in South Weed. And so the next thing is I also wanted to talk about the fact that the city of Weed is pretty they're pretty strict about the empty buildings and things like that. And I just wanted to be able to bring in a business to an empty building and be able to bring tax revenue to the city of Weed. It would create jobs. It's going to create a lot more business revenue for a lot of different companies that I've already spoken with. And I just think that overall it's a great location. It's a good place, not near any schools, not near any children, not near any houses or churches or anything of that sort. It is in the industrial part of South Weed. And the only person that sells liquor in that whole area is the Valero, which again only carries the small little tiny plastic bottles. And I've spoken to a lot of community members who do think it is, it would be it would add to their convenience of being able to do their grocery shopping as well in that area and just in general. It is just a more realistic place to shop for the products that I'm wanting to sell.
I have a couple of questions. What what is the ABC saying about?
So the ABC, they told me unless, did you want to?
Both of you actually.
Okay, so they directly told me that the like pretty much the the census track of liquor licenses is higher in weed, which also counts Shastina, even though it's not in the city limits, it does count Shastina. However, they also told me that every city is saturated and that it that's why the city needs to like pretty much vote on it.
Had they told you anything about, they didn't recommend that you do that or you shouldn't do that?
Not at all. They would have never given me the like even the permit or like the transfer paperwork and all that if they wouldn't have recommended it or if they couldn't allow it there.
And then part of this business, what else do you have in that store?
I have basic like foods, like food goods. I have like chips and snacks and I have I have beanies in there that are made by someone from Mount Chassa. I have soaps and and shampoos and salts and things that are just locally made. I have different art pieces that are in there. I have, it's just like a souvenir slash just general gifts and things like that. No hot food, just snacks and.
Are you going to put that in at some point if that goes through or is there, or is it going to stay the same? Will you ever do any more than that in that building? Will you do hot food in it any any point or?
So I guess I should clarify this. In 175, it's supposed to be partial restaurant and partial liquor store. It's not going to be a full entire liquor store. The restaurant part of it is still going to be serving as a restaurant.
Okay.
Yes, so I wouldn't be taking away a business from the community. It would just be adding a second one in there, which would create a lot of tax revenue and different things like that and jobs and.
Or is it compliance, any?
And just, I think the ABC, the city of Weed has allotted, I think, seven off sale licenses. I think the website showed that there was only six issued, which currently we have 12. And in the past, a waiver was needed for past applicants and business developments. And that's what Chief Mayberry reached out to ABC because it was showing that there was less licenses than we currently have in the city.
So did you get the waiver?
The waiver, I believe, comes from you all. Yes.
So that's what this is, just to get the waiver for that.
Yes, that's correct.
And even though we're over what the number says, that's what I want to make sure.
I believe we're, like I said, we are allotted seven. And I think we currently have 12 and a waiver has been needed in the past for other businesses.
So so tonight, you're either you'll either adopt the resolution 35, upholding the denial for the transfer of the type 21 or resolution 36, which would be approving the transfer for the type 21 based on public convenience and necessity.
Mayor, may I have some questions, a couple of questions, actually? So I'm a little bit confused. That's just me.
Can help to clarify it as much as I can.
Okay, so we're talking about one building at 175?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
As I go by that building currently, there is a souvenir shop in the front.
Yes.
There is a restaurant attached to that behind it.
Correct.
So what part of 175 will you be proposing to to be in?
So the souvenir shop, I don't know if you've ever actually been inside the building. The souvenir shop takes about maybe one fifth of that larger sized building to the right if we're looking towards the way of Pilot. The souvenir shop takes about one fifth of that larger building. The other four fifths, you should just be like a party room or like it used to just be like a larger area for the restaurant to be able, yes, a meeting room, et cetera. So that's what it is. It's just like a large, open, concept style building in there. So it would be right there in the middle.
Is there an exterior door going in that's separate?
Yes, there is. There's two and it is like for one for the emergency exit and there's a front entrance door as well.
And currently there is no restaurant in the other part of the building.
That is correct.
That's correct.
I believe they're working on their business license. However, I am not completely sure, however, that part will not be used. It will become a restaurant. It will not, the liquor store will not be extending into that portion of the building.
And that brings me to my bigger problem is the, for me, is the bus stop has been a continued thorn in the side of this council and of the city. From one location to the new location to God knows whose location. So for me, somebody needs to buy a ticket. And I need to see, or at least for me myself, I would like to see where that destination is that you buy a ticket to.
Yes.
Is it once, if it says 175, I will tell you my answer is absolutely not because I don't need to see a drunk.
Getting on the bus.
Get on a bus. They have enough problems. They used to have one of those in Reading, actually. And it turned, it was a, it was a mess if anybody remembers.
So I do have one.
Too far, too old.
I do have one question for you, Councilor, just to make sure that we're on the same page. Are you talking about the Greyhound or which bus are you, because I don't, I don't recall the other bus ever changing locations.
I don't see Greyhound there much anymore.
Greyhound stops in Mount Chassa. They have completely cut off contact with stopping in Weed, so they don't stop at all in Weed. They only stop at the.
Problem it becomes Frontier.
Yeah.
Is that the one? Okay.
Yes, the Frontier is still Norte Bus Line.
So often does it? I need verification that for for me anyway.
6 a.m. in the morning and then 7:30 p.m. at night.
Daily.
Daily.
That's kind of what I'm asking. That's why I want to know what is that ticket saying? And that is a big thing for me.
Yes.
I I support the business.
Do you mind if I possibly looked up their website and tried to see if they have an address if I were to buy a ticket just?
I'm okay with that, yeah. But that means you can't get action tonight. We probably, I would, I would venture to table it. Because I, for me, I'd want to, I'd want to physically see it.
Yeah.
I do, too. That makes a difference for me.
Okay.
I don't know about, and I don't want you to go through that trouble. If we have three other council members here that may say no anyway. So and and I can't, we can't take a vote on this, but I I think those are my two issues and I don't want you to go off and buy tickets just based upon my issue.
Yes, I understand. I will say for a fact that they, I have seen them many times and even when I had taken the bus, I took it about two months ago, they dropped us off directly in the Pilot parking lot. It was not in, like it wasn't at the 175 East Vista Drive. And so that's all I can speak on it from personal experience. It was not associated with the 175 East Vista Drive location.
So I have a question for a point of clarification with staff. So we have four existing licenses in South Weed, one of which is type 21. The two that are currently under construction that have been approved previously that make up the six licenses, are those going to be type 21 as well? Do we know?
No, those were approved as type 20.
Okay, which is beer and wine.
Beer and wine.
Can I, I'm sorry, uh, you know. I understand that there's concern with the bus stop, and I'll comment on that separately, um. I, I don't know if anyone else, and maybe this is because of my profession and what I do, um, is see DUI drivers all the time. Um, I feel incredibly uncomfortable putting a hard liquor location right next to an overnight bus stop of Pilot. Um, given what we've been seeing on the news as far as accidents involving semi-drivers. I, I, I think we're walking into a recipe for disaster. Um, and I know that it's not the business owner's fault that there might be some irresponsible drivers. But I also believe as city council member that. I should negate any possibility that that occurs and. If Valero is selling a small-sized liquor bottle and that's the most that they can get their hands on if they're parked overnight at Pilot. I would feel much more comfortable as a member of this community, knowing that they don't have access to that. Um, I think secondarily, I can, I, 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 you know, I think it's well-known that I live in South Weed. Um, I have seen the Valero, I have seen the buses uh and where they are parking and. It appears that they get chased from one location to another. Um, their recent location was just behind one seventy-five East Vista Drive. Um, on the backside, there's a longer parking lot that runs uh behind Valero and one seventy-five East Vista. Um, they have also turned to parking at the curb line next to one seventy-five East Vista. And they are parking on the opposite car curb line furthest away from Pilot. So those are my personal observations of being a citizen in the community and watching the bus activity that's occurring there. Um, so for me, even if I saw a ticket that had a different address on it, I know the reality of where they're going. Um, and I get citizen complaints all the time. I get business complaints from South Weed, cuz obviously they know I'm down there a lot. Um, and so, for, for those that are, are hanging their hat on the fact that this might create a disaster or the bus depot. Um, I can assure you, those buses are right there, uh. Um, and whether they have to cross the street from being in the Pilot parking lot or whether it says one seventy-five East Vista. I don't think it changes the analysis to me. It's nothing against the, the business owner. Um, or the type of business they want to run. Um, for me, there is a sincere location issue.
For me, I think I'd like to speak on that and say that I feel as though, um, if people wanted to. Uh, be like drunk drivers, which obviously I hope that no one would like to do that. I do think that they could still buy ten of the sizes at. Um, Valero and be just as much there as they would be, um, regardless. I don't think that a professional driver should be. Risking their whole entire um job and obviously their well-being and their. Fellow, other people's well-being on that. I don't think that would um possibly be an issue, however. In my opinion, I think that it would already be happening if it, cuz there is already liquor in South Weed if, if that was the case.
Mister Mayor, may I have a moment? I uh, I actually just went to the uh website. For uh the bus terminal and uh uh for uh Fronteras Del Norte, is that the right one? And I just did a simple Albany, Oregon, because that was convenient to Weed, California, and then if you actually go to the map. Um, to ask it, map it out for you, and I'll screenshot it and send it to you, but it does say one seventy-five. On their website. So I think, I just, I just wanted to let you know that that's what I'm seeing on my end, and I'll screenshot it and send it to you.
Okay, I tried to look up a ticket from Weed to Bakersfield for um tomorrow and it. Didn't even give me any, like it didn't give me even availability. Um, so maybe it's cuz it was booked or something.
Well, I did it for October thirteenth. Just a random, just a random. It was Ashland, Oregon. At five fifty, at five forty-five PM, then it arrives at Yarica at six. And then at six thirty, Weed, California, and if you look on the map, it doesn't say it directly on the, on the initial uh listing. But if you look at the map, it does say one seventy-five Vista Drive.
So it's not directly on the bus ticket listing, is that correct?
Uh, I cannot clarify that. I'm just saying, when I look at the map of the route, it say, it lists your address.
Did you have a question?
Councilor, could you turn on your microphone, please?
Yeah.
It's on.
It's on.
Closer, closer.
Um, like I said, it, it does raise a concern, um, seeing that um the, the, the location of the bus drop-off and the bus stop. There, um, to have the type twenty-one, um. License there, um, is just raised a, a major con- concern of myself because. I really, I really believe that the safety of the community and like it's so, that would be too convenient for. Someone to, 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 to purchase and while they're on the road, so I really um feel like that. That would be something that is a raised concern for myself.
Okay, and if I were to talk to the bus company and deny them access to um, like the building, all their passengers, I mean. It wouldn't be a problem for me to have the bus stop somewhere else, or if they wanted to stop at just the rest area, um. North of or south of, close to the airport. I mean, I could just tell them that they just aren't welcome in. That building. I just know that they don't stop there right now and it's hard for me to be able to. Deny customer service, however, if they are on the bus, I would happily deny them service of any sorts at all. And I would happily ask the, I know the um. Bus company, well, I could call them and directly ask them to not stop anywhere near. That location, if that was something that um was concerning to anyone, and I could also just deny them. Access into the building as well. And I could ensure that the bus drivers also make sure that nobody comes onto the bus with any. Liquor at least purchased from me. I know that they're able to purchase it from Valero freely and through um any of the other gas stations. But for me specifically, I could make sure that they wouldn't be buying from me.
It's a, it's a tough one, cuz that location has been a problem. And so.
I appreciate the offer by the business owner um to essentially self-regulate, but. My concern is, is that there is no enforcement mechanism, um, once this is granted, and so. I would make a motion to uphold the denial.
Could I also state that I personally know the bus owner? And it would be very easy for me to eh, like ask him to not even stop in South Weed at all anymore. I don't know if that is something that would change your mind, or if that is something that would um be helpful.
So I have a, a question, um, I guess we'll go to staff first and then, and then to uh Valerie Chang there is. The language on this says uh approve the transfer as public necessity and convenience. Um, what do we have feedback for, against, if any, from the community that this is a necessity or convenience for the public? Um, for this service?
Can you repeat that real quick? You were kinda low volume. I was trying to read along where.
Um, the language on the resolution says approving a transfer as public necessity and convenience. And I'm just curious as to what feedback, if any, that we have had, either for the city staff or for the proposed business owner. That show this as a necessity or a business, uh, a necessity or a convenience for the public of weed.
I personally haven't had any feedback or negative talking to me about from the community, um, I just. I know that in the past, the one seventy-five Vista, when it was Greyhound, when it was. Um, I think they switched to Lex now is what they call it, and Fronteras Del Norte. Wouldn't stop there. Um, the, the businesses in South Weed would get overran. Uh, Valero got to the point where they would lock the doors. Um, so they, because too many customers were coming in at once. Um, as far as the liquor store or liquor expo being open there, I don't have any. Community feedback on that.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, taking the bus completely out of this, what is a necessity and convenience to the public? Is, I guess, my question.
So I have not heard eh, for or against either, either direction from the public, um. And I'm trying to remember, and um city manager Stan Bob might recall as well, the um email that Justin had sent. That the public convenience and necessity is something that the council needs to deem that. This particular business, and that's an ABC, um, that's ABC terminology. They're saying that you guys need to deem that. As public necessity and convenience for our community in order to have additional licenses over what we're allotted from ABC.
Okay, I ask, cause I've had constituents that have approached me about having, um, you know, a pharmacy, that's number one. I've had constituents that have approached me asking about, you know, when is elementary school gonna be completed? A lot of constituents asking about the potential transfer of the library to a new building. Um, but I have not had a constituent come up and ask me about an additional liquor store, um, you know, in, in the town and. I, being someone who doesn't shop at those kinds of stores, I, I don't have any personal firsthand experience, so I'm just trying to find out. What are the people of Weed need, um, irregardless of the bus stopping or not, so.
I have not gotten, Mister Mayor, I have not gotten any feedback, well, for or against this front, this uh particular issue.
I think just as a may.
Of course, yeah, I, I wanted to get staff's take, if any, and it sounds like there have been no, no feedback from the, the. Public, but I'd like to hear from you as well.
What was that?
It wasn't, yeah, there was no feedback. It's good or bad.
Okay.
There's just no feedback.
Yes, so I think, um, probably something that the community. Necess- like, does need is obviously more um revenue to the city. It does bring in tax revenue. It does bring in more jobs. I know people have asked me for places of employment and it's hard for me to direct them really anywhere. Um, I also know that in regards to, again. Grocery outlet, they're the only ones that sell wine in that general South Weed Business District area. Um, and their options are limited and sometimes they don't have certain brands, obviously, because they get. They get what they can from uh grocery stores and different places that are sort of like offsetting um their costs and selling over to Grocery Outlet. Um, and then, again, I have a lot of people who drive from Mount Chasta. In order to cut the costs of going to Rais or something, they will be driving to the Liquor Expo, or they will be driving to the Hilt location because it is. Cheaper, um, a lot cheaper than the Rais locations, and they have more variety and different things like that and. I've had many people tell me that they would definitely be. Willing to shop at Grocery Outlet more often if it was, if it, there was liquor nearby or something like that, so they could just make it like a one-stop shop instead of. Having to go far and different places all at once, so if. You wanted me to get a petition in regards to community members of age, of drinking age, who view it as. Convene- as something convenient for them, I would love to do that, um. Just wasn't sure how many signatures you would like from me, or if that was something that was of interest to you.
I'm just asking a question in general, cuz I don't have any knowledge on that, um, you know, like I said, I've, I've had a lot of feedback on other. Topics the community is interested in, but this is not one of them. But I, I'm not surprised to hear that people drive. Um, you know, Grenada or Hilt for liquor, cuz I certainly see a lot of people that come into town for the dispensaries, so. We have any other questions or comments from the council, staff, or our proponent? Do we have any, any public comments uh here in the chambers or on Zoom?
I did wanna just make one more comment to you guys that I, um, as a young entrepreneur who's just trying to. Just make it here in um, in the city of Weed, I really appreciate, um. Just like an open-mindedness of this. I promise that it will not become a problem, and if it was, I would be willing to do anything and everything it was. In order to avoid any issues, avoid any problems, um. Bar obviously certain individuals from coming in and from. I could one hundred percent ensure that the bus never stops there. I just. Would really appreciate the uh opportunity to be able to make some success in the community that I currently live in. And to bring some tax revenue in order to be able to donate to things that matter to me, um. And so that was just the last little bit that I wanted to speak out there for you guys.
So I guess that brings an additional question for staff is. If this location or any other location has a license to sell, you know, liquor or, or any other, you know. Would we consider vice, you know, liquor or marijuana, anything like that? If that business becomes an issue, does the council, the city have the purview to pull that license? If there becomes a problem, or is this something that, once it's approved, is the gospel?
David?
I, I believe it's gonna be, it's up, it's gonna be ABC's uh jurisdiction. Once it's, if it's approved.
So we don't know.
So once we approve it, then we lose jurisdiction and ABC is gets jurisdiction, is that correct?
With respect to the liquor license specifically, yes, but we, obviously the city maintains its ability to enforce. Its nuisance laws and its, and its misdemeanor uh provisions of the municipal code. Vis a vis conduct that occurs and activities that occur at the location.
But those, but those, actually, those conditions are very limited and very minor, so.
I just wanna have an understanding for the council and for the public that maybe watching that we understand, you know. I, cuz we're gonna be accountable to the constituents, whether this is good or bad, whether they're happy or, or upset, so.
That's what we signed up for.
And also, there used to be a liquor license at Chevron, and they used to sell the large-style liquor bottles and. I pretty much spent my entire life in South Weed and I never experienced any issues with Chevron personally. Um, I just wanted to throw that out there as well.
I can share an anecdotal story is uh, I worked there for a few months when I first moved to town decades ago. Um, and I, I did witness uh employees assaulted by people uh after three AM that wouldn't, you know, couldn't buy liquor and. Uh, interesting local people who bought liquor first thing in the morning at six fifteen before going to work, so. Uh, again, that was decades ago, so I'm sure a lot of things have changed, uh.
And I will not be open.
Thirty years.
At three AM, that is unfortunate.
So, um, I know uh the Weed Police Department has historically been very busy in South Weed uh for various reasons, so.
Probably not gonna be happy with it, but I'm for it on certain things if we can get some guarantees. But some of the things I don't think you can guarantee. I don't think you can tell a bus, you cannot stop here. You can't come into my store. I mean, I, and I wouldn't want you to do that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm for capitalism and I'm for i- i- if, you know, everything's by the book, but again, that. If it's going to your spot, then. That's a problem, it is. But I'll be honest with you. I've seen him parked out there when it was Dos Amigos. And they parked on that side, but I've also seen him in Pilot, in the parking lot when you first go in. I've watched him coming off of that bus. So I think it's, it's on both spots.
Yes, so I feel like, um, just from, branch off from that, sorry if I'm taking up a lot of your time. Um, I would like to ask the police officer, like, do you think that the crime has been affected since? The Greyhound has left, cuz it, my personal opinion, when I worked at that restaurant, I worked there for six years. The only problems I ever had with people in regards to, um, they were obviously on something or they were, um. Just erratic and, and causing problems. It was only from the people from the Greyhound. What was that?
I lived three houses south of the Greyhound.
Yes, so now they only stop in Mount Chasta.
Happen with the Greyhound.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so.
They do stop in Mount Chasta now, and they don't stop in um South Weed, however, the people that came off the. Other bus, they always were pretty quiet. They were very, um. Well-behaved. They ordered their food. They created a lot of tax revenue for the city of Weed. Um, just from the traffic of them, and then I will also say that they, if. You didn't want it in South weed, where would be? An ideal location, because I know there's citizens in weed who use that bus service or there's, if I wanted to go. Somewhere I would use it too, but I just, it is convenient to be able to have something that will travel. Across state borders instead of just like the public bus, so I wasn't sure if that was something that also. If you wanted it specifically moved to somewhere that was, you know, like. Absolutely no alcohol anywhere, maybe just food or. That was also something.
We need restaurants.
I I have a one last question before I can think about this. Several years ago, we had a lot of problems with Greyhound. We had a lot of problems with, I don't know which frontier, but what I define them as. Some great big large white buses and then we had Greyhound and. And we had problems with pilot complaining that they were overrun by. The the riders on the bus and they were. Puffering, stealing and enough that. The Valero actually closed its doors as he defined. Has that abated since Greyhound has not shown up?
So since Greyhound has not shown up, our our shoplifting crimes from. In pilot from Valero, that has gone down a little bit. As far as. That the loitering, I mean, the the crime that. Greyhound brought to us made South weed pretty a high functioning crime area that has dissolved. It has gone down quite a bit, if that answers your question.
So we're not getting that same. Crime rate.
Since Greyhound has left, no, we haven't, we're not, not on that level of calls for service.
So seems to be one. Potentially, I'd also like to remind.
I lived down the Duff Street from it.
I know.
At one particular point, someone got dropped off at Greyhound and that person was. Was shot and killed by police officers and I was there, so I'm just saying that Greyhound was bad. It was a bad spot, I constantly was out there chasing people around.
And and it seems like it when it moved, it created a bad spot.
It was brung wrong. It was it was it it wasn't open, people just stood around there, they wouldn't get taken, it was a bad run.
Bring us back in the focus, Greyhound is gone and this is a discussion over a business license transfer for a liquor store.
Right, what I'm trying to relay for me is the factors that. Is this a good situation or is it a bad situation? I don't want to increase crime, I don't want to increase calls from our police department. We're already stressed enough with all of that. And so that's why I brought it up, but I also bring up one last thing is we also, as not this particular council, but a prior council. Approved a liquor warehouse there. I think it fell through for a lack of. Design on the building or something like that. Or some something took place. It it went, it went through, it went, fell through the cracks. Oh, it since well holler at me sooner, I wasted all of the conversation on myself. We, I I would say in that prior to. This application, we had approved, the city can go back and look at the building documents. We had approved a building to go in that it kind of fell through the cracks or didn't, never took place. And I think the permit was abandoned, for lack of a better term. And it seems like the bad player Greyhound is no longer in our town. I I, you know.
Do you want to get even more information or?
I don't know if I want to get more information, I think we beat this up enough for me personally. I think it it just is a very. It it's a hard situation to approve or disapprove. And I think that's what's got us, it's got me caught, I'll tell you that, I don't know about anybody else, but. There is a motion on the on the. Floor though. If I remember right, didn't Melissa make the motion?
She did.
We need a second for that.
So so that means it dies for a second? For lack of a second?
It hasn't received a second, but that's up to the mayor how long he wants to hold that open.
I have a hard time approving, I I want to, I want to approve, but. Past history gives me the eebie jeebies.
I can guarantee that within a year you will be very, very happy that you approved, I know that I. Have a really good heart, I I do care for the community deeply, even like on the last meeting when the guy had talked about the Meals on Wheels like. It it affected me greatly to know that they were underfunded, it affects me to know that the students. Obviously, they're underfunded, I went through the same school system, I know how it is. There's no other way for me to show you besides than to prove it to you. And I know within one year you all would be very, very happy with your decision if you did approve it.
Well, I'll take a shot here and I'll make a motion to approve, even though I denied the first time.
You're approving it?
I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, and we have no second for the previous motion? Okay, so that motion is dead and we have a motion to approve and a second. Any public comments here or abroad on Zoom? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Councilmember Palphini?
Yes.
Councilmember Verasan?
It's your heart, vote your heart.
It's okay, however, which way you move.
We win and we lose, it's fine.
Well, I didn't hear that. Count Councilmember Whitstein?
No, she's there, I think.
I think she's frozen.
Can you repeat Councilman Verasan's response? I didn't hear that.
She she said yes. And Council and Mayor Parham?
I will abstain. All right, so it sounds like we have three approving votes. All right, congratulations on your.
Thank you so much, you guys don't. I really, really appreciate it, thank you. I will, I I will make you proud, don't worry, I already have big plans for this place, thank you.
All right, now we're on to item B, by motion, council will consider introductions in first reading by title only of ordinance number four eight eight two thousand twenty five. Amending section one point oh five point zero one zero of chapter one point zero four of title one.
Mr. Mayor, permission to speak?
Of course.
Thank you, this is just me reading through the code and starting to clean stuff up on that end. I asked for David's help, this is just making sure that all the city. Because when I read the code, I was really confused because some parts said city, a lot of it said city administrator, and then there's a city manager ordinance. That I guess supersedes all the rest of it, so David and I, I've I've asked David to put a help, we. We're looking to, we're, I'm looking to clean up the code as part of my mission while I'm here, as part of our process improvement, yada yada. So it's just an administrative update to reflect what this council has already approved.
Well, I can say, having read through your your ordinance proposal, I appreciate your definitions, I'm sure that had a lot to do with. The city attorney's support there, but.
Oh, yeah, I had a lot of support.
I I appreciate things being clearly defined, so well done. All right, any discussion amongst council? I'm assuming everybody read their packets in full? Okay.
Yeah, and just if I could, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
I think part of the plan with Mr. Stan Ball was. When we do make amendments to our municipal code going forward. And there are still those legacy references to the city administrator, we will clean those up. As they come before the council, but to go in one path and try to change every reference. Would be quite an undertaking, and so simply a definitional change. Will at least make it crystal clear going forward, what we're talking about when we say city administrator.
All right, any public comments? Here virtually? No, I'm I'm very thankful that at least one member of our public has stayed. Usually what happens in these meetings is we get a lot of people and then when their hot button issue is over, they leave, so appreciate you being here for the long haul.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, well, there's no public comments, so now it's time for somebody to make a motion if they're so inclined.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance four eighty eight dash twenty twenty five. An ordinance of city council of the city of weed. Amending section one point oh five point oh one zero, chapter one point oh four. Of title one of the weed municipal code defining city administrator as city manager.
I'll second that. And we'll now move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yep.
Councilmember Paphini?
Yes.
Councilmember Verasan?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstein?
Yes.
Mayor Parham?
Aye. Motion carries by unanimous consent. We have omitted item C, we will now move on to item D, building department, discussion item with direction to staff. Council review resolution O two twenty twenty three regarding the mill fire setbacks and give direction to staff. So.
Mr. Mayor, and I'll I'll give it to the experts after this, just a quick introduction, I was approached by Mike Britten a while back. Just questioning the precedent of prior approvals and as per our discussion, I wanted to make sure that we are stood. That he, I didn't feel it was fair for him to continue issuing. Building permits if he doesn't agree with the prior precedent set. So I just wanted to be represented to city council to make sure that. City staff is still carrying, I want to make sure that they are heard and that you support the direction that he would like to go. I him and fire chief as they would like to go, so Mike, if you want to weigh in and explain a little more?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Summer, Mr. Mayor, council members. When I took this position and we were dealing with the mill fire replacement homes. I was informed that. The city had approved a variance allowing homes to instead of have a ten foot setback from the side property lines. To a five foot. To allow for larger homes, those types of things, so it went before the planning commission and the plan commission. Did approve a variance of five feet, but however, it was for the front property line and the back property line. Which is not the way that I was informed, so starting with the very first mill fire house that was built. The city, they were under the assumption that they could build a house five feet off the two side property lines, so what this does. Is you're instead of houses being ten foot and ten foot for a total of twenty foot, we're back to the ten feet apart. In some instances, there are less than ten feet when you take into account the eaves, you're down around seven feet apart. So from a fire standpoint, as a safety and health part is part of my job. My concern is we're putting ourselves back in the same position we were before the fire started. So what we have before us, we currently have twenty four homes that have been built. That includes manufactured homes along with stick built homes, we currently have five foundations that were built with those standards. With the five foot setback on the side yards. What I would like to see is the city. Allow me to go back to doing the ten foot setbacks on the side yards. This means that the previous twenty four homes kind of set a precedence, so. Unfortunately, we'd be, I'm asking you to go away from the precedents and let us go back to the code, that's the first question. The second concern I have, of course, is we have six homes right now where they have paid for engineered plans. Based on the five foot setback that was part of the original agreement with the city. So those six homes would have to have their houses redesigned to fit with the ten foot setback, so quite a bit smaller. Their only option then is to go increase the length of the property, so narrow and long, similar to a single story townhouse. And if that's the case, we, the actual variance that we have in place does list five foot from the front. Five foot from the back, and I would ask that you would allow that to stay in place. So those homeowners can still build a larger house, but one concern that Fire Chief and I have. With that variance currently is from a front of the house, there's plenty of room for fire trucks. Adjoning house across the street is twenty thirty feet away, it's not an issue. However, in some sections of Lincoln Heights, there are alleys which will then separate and give us back our twenty twenty five foot. Feet, but there are other areas that do not have alleys. So in those areas, we would like to see the ten foot setback maintained, that way we still have that twenty feet. So it's it's a little confusing. All I can say is it's something that happened and I'd like to correct it and get it back to where with the remaining houses, so we can get back to a safer. Community.
So. From my understanding to clarify, resolution of O two twenty twenty three ends in January, is that correct? Of twenty twenty six is when it runs out, is it sunset date?
Yes, it I believe it's January twelfth of twenty twenty six.
Okay, and. Do we, do we have any additional houses that are anticipated between now and January to come through and apply to build?
We have six.
But those are already in process?
The plans have been submitted, but the permits have not been approved.
Okay.
They're in various stages of plan check.
And of those six houses, are those the county provided plans or are those?
One of them, one of them is a county provided plan, I haven't seen the plan yet. That they're in the process of that right now and part of that issue, of course, is what you determine. Because that house would will fit. Pretty much kind of in between the five foot variance and ten foot variance, she has a little more property available to her. So I think we could, we might build with slight adjustments, make that county plan fit on that property. The fact that it's it's an almost free plan from the county, it's okay, she's okay with having to. Hire an engineer architect to do a slight redesign on that one.
So if I could, with that, the rest, the other five. Under what you're proposing, we would require all new engineering?
Yes.
And what kind of financial burden do we kind of know?
You know, I I haven't, I couldn't answer that question. The house I built in twenty sixteen, obviously, the price is quite a bit different than it is now, but for me, it was about six thousand dollars back then.
So double that.
Probably double that. But again, I I haven't inquired, there's two engineers that most of the locals have been using. We could find out if you'd like to.
Are most of these houses? Of similar design or are they the same design like a reverse floor plan?
There's quite a few homes now, there's three that have been built, they're almost identical, they just switched the garage locations. And there's two more that fell into those that design, and so they didn't have to go to plan check. So they saved a little little bit there, the one thing I will also just point out is all these homes so far. Is part of that waiver where the city didn't chart, is not charging them a billing permit fee. And up until July first of this year, our plan checker also refused to accept payment, let's put it that way. And now he is, he's basically, he's having to charge again. So they have saved a tremendous amount of money due to the the city's waiver. But they still will incur some cost to redesign those.
Okay.
It's, uh, if I may, uh, inter- interject for a moment, it's, it's going back to, um. Do we want to pay now or later for what I'm, I, I share, I'm not an expert, but I share the concern with both our Fire Chief. And Fire Chief, if I'm misheard, please interject, but I'm, I'm concerned that if. We continue the trend that we're just, uh, gonna pay later when the next fire happens. So i- it's better to hit it what now, on these six homes while we can. Thank you.
I, I would probably concur with that, being in the business I'm in. Um. That ten feet is a bare minimum as well. Uh, some of the insurance requirements are, like for small outbuildings, are getting to be more than thirty feet. If you want to buy a policy. So, besides us, there are others screaming the same tune, um. And, and, and ten feet is, is just. I, I think part, part of. Wouldn't want to blame the total thing about having close proximity. But it did have a bearing factor on to the spread and quickness of the fire, and I think. That's kind of one of those, uh, things that went with it, um. I just don't want to see a horrible financial burden to those that we kind of misinformed. Um. So, w- we do have a lady out there, but I, um, I don't know what, what her issue is in particular, but.
So, we have twenty-five completed homes from the millfire recovery.
Twenty-four completed.
Twenty-four completed, one in process?
And fi- yes, one in process and five foundations.
And these are, this one in process and the five foundations are the six that we're talking about here, or?
Uh, only one of them is.
Okay. Um, of those twenty-five homes, and I'm, I'm gonna also lean on the Fire Chief here, um, because I haven't. Driven through and looked at every single lot, um, in the area there. Um, how many of, do we have an approximation of how many of those are a fire concern because of the five-foot setback issue?
Um, I drove the neighborhood, uh, this afternoon in anticipation. And there are two existing houses that I believe are really close to meeting actua- our actual code. Um, that have some separation, um, and there is, there, one of the new ones bui- being built on Alameda. Uh, on the backside, uh, there's, it's exceeded our code. Um, so that one is, will be in really good condition, will be in good shape on that.
Okay, but the other twenty-three to twenty-four are all at risk?
Yeah, there, some of them were done ten-foot from the foundation instead of ten-foot from the eaves. And, um, the current one that's almost being finished, uh, we actually have ten-foot between the eaves. Which.
Okay, that's.
And what is, just from my own edification, is it, is it ten-foot from the eaves of the code or does it state?
It doesn't state, it just says the setback from the side yards is ten feet.
Okay, reason to ask is, is my home up, uh, in subdivision two was built in O seven. Uh, it was previously a mill house that burned down where it was built, and, uh, we have less than five feet. Uh, on our edges to our fence line, uh, cause I had rebuild the fence after Bull's Fire, and, um.
Yeah.
So, that, that whole neighborhood up by the high schools, sim- same way, we're all within seven, eight feet of each other from window to window.
Yeah, all through Shasta Avenue, all those, that, you know, they don't meet current code.
Yeah.
But they rebuilt years ago, those ones.
Yeah.
Though, of those that don't meet some of the setbacks. Is it more influenced on the eastern side or on the west side?
Both, both sides.
Both sides.
Yeah, both sides were treated equally.
So it'd be safe to assume that everybody was trying to get more house on their lot, basically?
Absolutely, as soon as, as soon as this. Uh, someone within the city, we're not sure who, cause it's been changed over quite a few, we have new department heads. So we don't know who exactly said you could do this. Um, but, uh, it's just happened, let's just put it that way.
So the council.
Now, we, we have the consequences and we're try, we, I'm asking for a decision from, from city councils, how you want me to proceed.
So the council, just to make it clear for everybody, including our seven YouTube followers, so the council in twenty twenty-three approved five-foot. From the front and back.
Front and back.
And somehow amongst the revolving door of staff in that last two years' time, it, we approved people to be less. Less than ten-foot, five-foot on the sides, which was never part of that original approval.
That's correct.
Okay, so this is a, this is a city issue, not a builder issue.
Correct.
Um. So we're, we're basically looking for clarification for the staff to follow our original rules that were set in twenty twenty-three, this is not. Changing anything.
That, that's one of the things we're, we're, we're asking you to accept, the, the other thing, of course, is, um, and, um. Uh, Mr. Stambo mentioned this, is the, the end, the extra workload it puts on me. Uh, cause every contractor, you know, we're supposed to go before planning commission. And get an approval, which is the way the ordinance, uh, the resolution is written. And of course, according to the way it's written, Mr. Stambo actually can approve those. But that means that all the additional homes on the empty lots will be coming to him, myself, and then to him for approval. So we're requesting, uh, either it be made. On a permanent basis for a period of time, or something to, to reduce our workload.
Yes. I think the biggest thing that will reduce our workload is clarity. Do we want to continue the precedent that was set, or do we, are you willing to help us fight? Because I don't, right, uh, right now, Mike feels like he's, he's going again. It's his, uh, professional recommendations for these, and I would ra- I would rather support him.
I'm chuckling on my side because if you come up to my neighborhood. You got, you gotta love, uh, uh, love how we've done things over the years, but there's ten feet on one side, uh, between ten and ten. And on the other side of the, the neighboring house, it's five and five, and then it's ten and ten again. So, we've gone through quite the gamut of, uh. Setback.
Setbacks.
Yeah.
Yes, there, there is, uh, one of the newer homes on the rail, on, off railroad, it's approximately eleven feet on one side and five on the other. And that could have easily been at least put in the middle, you know.
Somewhere, yeah.
Yeah.
Have the people that are gonna do this, sorry. Gonna have their plans adjusted if we go this direction. How loud is everybody gonna scream at us?
I have no idea, um.
Oh, I thought you would help on that.
Mrs. Smith is still here, but she would be one of the individuals, she spoke earlier.
Okay.
She would be one of the individuals, she has the county plan, but she would have to have it redesigned slightly to fit. She has a little more property, which is, benefits her, she has, uh, not as much depth, but she has length the opposite direction and. Uh, if we maintain the five-foot, five-foot as is, which is front and rear. Uh, she wouldn't only have to make minor, uh, modifications to her length to fit in there with the ten-foot setback on the sides. As far as the others, I, they don't, they aren't aware of this at this point, so depending on what your decision is, then. I'll, I can let you know by next, next meeting, cause I'll have to, uh, let them all know, all the contractors know.
My, my big concern here, um, is due to our mistake as a city. Are we imposing undue hardship on citizens trying to rebuild because we made a mistake? And by we, I don't mean you, cause this was before your time, and I want to clarify that for our seven YouTube viewers, uh. You know, Mr. Britton is doing the, the right thing to the law here, um. But I guess, uh, I was gonna ask, uh, our Fire Chief what his opinions are, um. And risk factors, if any, if you've reviewed the current six applications, if they move forward as engineered.
I have not had a chance to review the six, um, but. As Mike stated, we both talked about this, and, uh, the setback is there, um, for fire safety, and. It essentially, um, keeps, hopefully keeps, if one house catches on fire, we're able to have a. Better chance of keeping it from the next house next to it. Uh, with the five-foot in the front and rear. Um, the, like he just, like he said, there's a street on the front side, so you automatically have five feet. Plus the street, and then five feet on the other side, so the, the front is not a concern if that's a variance that. Um, is in place, and five feet on the back with an alleyway. Was essentially the same as having five feet on the front, cause you have five feet, an alleyway, and then five feet on the other side. So that gets you closer to twenty, twenty-five feet there. The sides being five feet, that's only ten feet, and, uh. Here, the main factor that we have, uh, working against us on most fires is wind. And when we have wind, that essentially takes a fire that's on flat ground and acts like a fire that's on steep terrain. So it pushes the fire horizontally more than vertically. Um, and that would push, potentially push fire horizontally onto a structure that's nearby. Um, I, I feel the. Hesitation, um. Working, you know, with these families that have already submitted these plans. Based off of previous knowledge and expectations from before. Um. I don't see, you know, it's. It can't be, um, easy to consider additional costs, especially after. Already going through what they went through, you know, um. So if it's. Continue with what's there, and this is now, you know, the, the plan for, moving forward. I don't know if that's an option you guys are looking at or what, but from my point of view. It needs, it, we need to withhold what the variance said initially, and then maybe consider even the variance on the back. To have, um, some options there, uh, five feet if an alleyway is present, ten feet if not, something like that. Um, just to be able to keep that distance away from structures there. Um, but yeah, on the, on the side of things where there's an additional cost, I. There's a hesitation there on, you know, enforcing that on people that are just trying to rebuild their house.
Well, and that's why I, I have so many questions is, I, I, I don't want to overburden the survivors of the millfire, but I also don't want to create. Millfire two-point-O, um, and having people, you know, if, if, God forbid, someone's house catches fire, that we lose two or three others because. We as a city didn't follow the code, um, you know, previously, so. Um, I'd like to hear from Mrs. Smith and, and. Since, uh, I'm, I'm thankful that someone from the public came that's actually part of this situation.
Thank you, so, um, my siblings and I, um, own the land at eleven sixty-five Grant Avenue here in Weed, California. We are, um, favorably, um, requesting, um. The approval of the council members for, uh, ten-feet variance there, um, as you've heard from Mike, and it will allow that. Um, and, most importantly, it would prevent if a fire would potentially occur in the future. You know, not escalating to the next house, and what you guys have done in the past. You know, the only thing that you can critically think about is you learn from that, and what you learn from that is what you do for the future. To prevent any further matters like this happening, so. What I have is three questions, can you approve the variance at eleven sixty-five Grant Avenue?
We, we can approve them one by one, but is that, is that what I'm getting?
The variance currently, the way the resolution is written, that the variance goes before the planning director, and the planning director takes it into consideration, and either can approve the variance or deny.
Okay.
But no, you, you can't, you're, you're not approving.
We're not approving one by one, yeah.
So it's not council's responsibility to approve that?
Not individually, we're here to set the whole plate, not just a part of it.
So Mike, is your. Decision to approve this ten-feet variance?
Uh, no, it actually does go to planning commission and I can go.
The planning director.
Planning director, excuse me, um.
Which would be me.
Yeah, which is.
Which is.
I won't approve it without all those other credentials.
Okay, so what I specifically need to know is, when will it go to you, um, the city manager, please, could you specify exactly when this would go to you?
Planning commission, it goes to the planning commission first.
And that would be November?
Yes, and then it'll go to me after, if they approve.
When? Could, do you have an as- anticipated timeframe of this? And the reason why I'm asking these specific questions, ladies and gentlemen. My sister, Lovey Smith. Is part of the, she's a landowner, she does not live here, she lives in Los Angeles and or Beverly Hills, California. She wants to pay for this immediately to get the foundation and the home rebuilt as quickly. As possible and accurately and righteously as possible, so I need to give her some specific timeframes to do this. Um, and that's what I'm looking for, um, I thought. Council, and I apologize, I thought council had to approve the ten-feet variance this evening. And I apologize, and maybe I misunderstood it the last time I had the preliminary meeting with you. So it goes to the planning commission, and then it goes to you, Mike, is that correct? I mean, I'm sorry, whatever your, the last name is, the city manager, and when will, okay, thank you.
So, um, i- in our course of our meeting, we were talking about these issues that I've brought before you. So if you were to approve, uh, the existing variance with the alley options that. Chief Carter and I have discussed, and go back to, uh, give me permission to go back to the ten-foot setbacks, which is what Sheri's saying. That answers my questions, her questions, and then if those variances are proved with that setback, um. She won't be anywhere near, she'll be about five-foot on her backyard, but her, behind her is ninety-seven. So there's no structure there, she'll be around thirteen feet on the garage and maybe seventeen feet on the house off the front. So she's, she's.
She's okay.
She's okay there.
You're asking to go back to code?
Go back to code, and then that solves her issue, she still has to apply for that variance because she's gonna be less than twenty feet unless you approve. The existing resolution of five-foot and five-foot.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um. I mean, obviously, Chief Carter, you have a specialty to look at these, um, together with the building inspector and say. This is gonna be a fire hazard and this isn't, right? I mean, for the six that are remaining, is the recommendation that the six remaining that are pending pose fire issues?
Yes, we, we, I mean, that was our original request, but I also want to be sensitive to the. I mean, I'm in agreement with a lot of the council members that, uh, we should be considering the financial burden. Because they're already approved, but like I said, it's a tough decision because if you approve them and we continue the trend. Then that, um, and when we know that the risk now. Um, you're taking that risk as a council to, uh, you're taking that risk of continuing what we know we should be stopping.
But it sounds like Ms. Smith's property is not the fire hazard that we're considering. As to why there should be these ten-foot setbacks, it sounds like it's set in a way that it wouldn't create an issue.
Yeah, with hers, it's not the ch- the biggest challenge, but I'm, we're, we're, we're here to establish this evening as precedent. To reset the, hit the reset button.
And is it possible that the precedent be that we're going back to the old way? But there has to be careful consideration by you as in your position with planning and with Chief Carter. That we are not going to make these people change their plans unless we see a significant fire hazard.
I would be okay with that personally.
I mean, I'd like to give them an opportunity, if they, if they have a similar situation to Ms. Smith where. You know, it's not exactly right, but, you know, they feel that they can get fire trucks in and it's not gonna roll over, then. I wouldn't want to put people through the finance of that, but I, I one hundred percent agree, we have to be. A cognizant that this isn't just the one person who has the right to their plot of land. But it's everyone else who is affected by us allowing them to build the larger house and then their property is affected. And I do think it's important, um, I think we're getting more and more regulation from the state, you know, we had something on today about. Um, you know, being able to say that there's a defensible space. So I think we're just walking our citizens into a problem with insurance, with, you know, the requirements of the state if we continue down this, this path. Um, but with that most concern to the six, I do think there should be an individual evaluation since there already are in the stage that they are. Um, by, by you and your planning, um, position and. Um, by, by you and your planning um position and with Chief Carter and his team taking a look at it and seeing how they can make it work.
So Ms. Smith, you said you had three questions and I think you only asked one.
I did.
And I'd, I'd like to get your other two questions before we.
So I didn't get an answer to um the first one, like.
We'll work on that.
And I guess I'm, I'm, I'm just a bit confused.
Can I address that just real quick?
Absolutely.
So, so first of all, um, I need application. And then I need a set of plans. Uh, that we talked about, and then the plans go before our plan checker. And once those are approved, then it goes to a variance. So the question that came in, depending on what the council decides on all the setbacks is if you, you can use those county plans as is. Or if they have to be modified to fit your property. So that's why we're going for city council to try to get some clarification, so you know. That hey, all you have to do is bring me everything on Monday, or you have to get your plans reengineered to fit your property.
Okay, where do I get the application?
Uh, it's online. I can give you one tonight before we go home.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So he has now addressed and answered my first question. Thank you.
It takes a while to draw it out of us, huh?
And I haven't had dinner.
Neither have I.
Um, after all of this is um completed, the application, the set of plans, and it goes through the next level and everything. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, then um if it's approved, then I will get a building permit?
Yeah, once everything is approved and it's almost depending on outcome with the variance is go, that should.
So I'll get a building permit once it's approved and that's been the documentation to me. That's a yes or no?
Yes, you have to pay school fees and some other things involved, but yes.
Right, right. And um, great, yeah, we talked about the Siskiyou Union High School District um school fees, which. I'll get waived and um, this building permit, um, God bless, if it's issued. By City Hall, which I hope that it will be, I'd like to um go on record to ask um if the fees can be waived. I remember hearing you guys say that a lot of the building permit fees were waived at a certain point. I don't know if that timeframe has elapsed or expired.
The uh time thing goes, it. Correct me if I'm wrong, is it January?
January twelve.
Twelve, January twelve, twenty, twenty-six.
Okay, so it's still in effect?
Yes, it's still in effect. Uh, the plan checker fees uh started again July first. Um, they've been very minimal. He's been very gracious uh to help the, the victims. But, and then of course you do have to pay school fees.
Right.
That we talked about, yes.
Okay, great. And that concludes my questions and you'll be hearing from me, Mike. Did you, council have any further questions for me before I step back?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for, for coming and, and because we don't have anybody else from that neighborhood, you know, that was affected to speak tonight. And thank you for your patience and, and getting those questions resolved.
Absolutely, and on behalf of that neighborhood, I mean, we're, it's just not a neighborhood. It was a. It was people. It was human beings. It's not just a neighborhood and the livelihood to maintain that and to keep that existence. Um. We need city council and we need the members here, every single member to help. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that said, I would like to remind. Remind everybody of this last fire we had. And the importance of setbacks. If it wasn't for that Main Street. Those buildings would have disappeared across the street. Is that correct? So that's officially a setback. Even though it's, it's Main Street, it's a setback for, that allows emergency personnel. So from my standpoint. I would like to, to go with your setbacks of ten feet of, on the front street. Five feet in the street, that's what you said was okay, right? Or is it ten feet?
It's five feet on the front and that's how the, how it's already set up in the variance is five front, five back.
Okay, that's sufficient. So, and on the back of the homes, we want to do ten feet?
We would recommend ten if it's uh directly against another property.
Okay.
And then. For instances where there's a street or an alleyway, it would make more sense to do, or it could make sense to do five because you're still getting that setback.
Okay.
Um.
So, and that could be determined by who? By, by.
All of us.
That would be between Chief Carter and myself, yes.
Okay.
So.
That's kind of what I'm, I'm, and I want to go with safety. I want to make sure that we're not creating, as you said. Millfire two point zero or whatever fire we want to call it. We've had a number, but. So that, that is my main point. I mean, the fact that we waived on the first set up by your home. We probably would, we probably did ourselves a little bit of injustice. Uh, and we need to learn from that, we need to learn from this. And so going forward. For me. I want to go with, with the fire department recommends because as Melissa pointed out. Things aren't getting easier out there. Uh. Insurance companies want to step back in. But they want to s- step back in on. Their, their terms, not our terms. So uh, whatever we can do to help people in all aspects from safety. To economy to however we get that done. That, that's kind of where I want to go.
Well, and ideally, what, what staff is asking us tonight is not to make a change, is to enforce what was already done. Because a previous staff member who's no longer with us was approving things that went against our resolution.
Okay.
So in my mind, you know, i- it's, makes absolute sense that we're going to uphold our existing law. That also follows the code and is safe. The only change that I'm hearing tonight is that we have consideration with the planning director and the fire chief. And the building inspector on the five foot variance on the rear of the property to take into consideration if there's an alleyway, a highway. Or any other defensible space line, which is within code, again, within law. Um, and, and reason. I mean, those codes exist for a reason.
Mayor, may I interject?
You're ready.
So, thank you. Um, so just to clarify my, my, my marching orders with the staff, so uh for the six remaining. For the six in limbo. Uh, uh, building request or a building permit request. Uh, do you, uh, so do you want to, do you want us to follow what Melissa was suggesting, council members, Melissa was suggesting to have each one of them reevaluated? By the building inspector and the police and the fire chief?
I think so because. First and foremost, we, we need to explain to those people if there is an issue there, you know. Mea culpa, because we had a previous staff member that approved something that they weren't legally allowed to. But yes, because we may potentially be giving them financial hardship, I would like to review those, those properties individually. To see what we can work with them on to achieve the goals that meet safety and the, and the legal requirement as well as to help them achieve their rebuilding goals. I understand that that's going to put undue hardship on staff. Um, and I apologize that, you know, a, a previous employee put us there. But I feel that's the right and ethical thing to do than just rubber stamping and saying yes or no. Based on their, their setbacks, um. Because they may have individual, you know. Circumstances that can be worked through to achieve both ends. Um, and so I think that's a fair way to fix our mistake as a city is to work with those five individuals. Um, or six individuals if necessary. Um, but at the same time, giving staff clarification that, yeah, no, going forward, we are going to follow the resolution. Uh, on all new applications. So that this doesn't occur again.
I want to just openly thank council for helping us get a resolution.
Now, that is, that is my opinion. I, I want to rest, the rest of the council here to weigh in on that.
I'm with what you're, I'm with what you're saying, mayor.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I, I think if um the city was wrong, that we should be, we should make it right. Because, you know, um, the community there, they, they, they need us, our support. I mean, definitely, we. If we are at fault that, 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 that um staff had approved things that they shouldn't approve, then it's only. Right that we, we meant the, the, the issue.
They said that they're trying to rebuild a home and get their things started again and. You know, we have to make it right with them, so it's a positive.
It's enough hoops in the state to jump through to build a house. We don't need to make it onerous.
I agree, a hundred percent.
Uh, Councilmember Westine, um. Do you have an opinion to share with us?
Um, I would like the fire chief uh with Dustin to, to work on these last five, six properties and. I think we need to hold tight to the setbacks that are required so that we are not. Devastated by another fire.
All right, is there any further questions or clarification from staff or? I know sometimes we can be clear as mud up here, so. Well, making sure we're all on the same page, so.
I do have some clarification. So I just want to confirm. The five or six that are already put in place, the request is that. We look at those individually to make sure that the setbacks are within this variance or. At least within a safe. Part of the code or however their property is set up and adjacent to streets or however that is. And then after these five or six, after we've gone through these five or six. From the next one forward.
All shall meet.
They will meet the actual.
Code.
Code that you get, that you approve for the five in the front, five in back, okay.
Cause that was the intent since it was done in twenty twenty-three, so. Um, and, and I, I would like to thank the staff uh in advance for the extra work that you're doing to clean up the previous errors. Um, as well as acknowledging to our seven viewers that our current staff here that's fixing the problem was not the cause of it.
And Mr. Mayor, I just, I just want to make, uh. If it's clear that if there is a fire hazard that's identified by the chief and. The city manager, then we are going to have these people redo these plans, right?
Yes, but we need to work with them to see what we can do to mitigate, you know, we need to find a middle ground there, but. If their existing plans are putting them five feet on the property line to an existing house, that's something that we won't be able to allow. Just because of the, the fire danger. It's not fair um to the other property owners to put their homes at risk.
Appreciate that clarity, thanks.
All right.
So this is a complicated one. Try this on Poseidon, you can do some friendly amendments.
Well, this is just giving clarification to staff. Um, this was a discussion item. There's no vote required. No, this is just uh. Because we already have an existing resolution that's two and, two and a half years old at this point. Um, this was just clarification and discussion. And I'm thankful to staff that this was put on the agenda for discussion because we got public input from someone who's experiencing this, that had questions. We were able to have this discussion as lengthy as it was, but now we're all on the same page.
Do we have that all down, Sandy, as far as what we, okay. I mean, we went through a lot of different things, so.
All right, um, our last agenda item, item E, public works by motion, council will consider change order for City Hall roof asbestos removal.
Yes, thank you, council. Um, before I get to the change order, I'd like to um let you guys know what has led up to these events. So on July seventeenth, um. We went ahead, brought in a professional company to test the um roof for asbestos. Um, they came back saying that was only nine hundred square feet. The reason why we did this was so that way we could go and get more accurate bids. Um, when we went out to bid for this roof replacement. On Monday, the contractors, um, United Builders, building contractors started tearing off the roof. When this um abatement ca- um company came to remove the nine hundred square feet of asbestos. Uh, that's when it was determined that the whole tire roof. Is filled with asbestos. Um, so in front of you tonight is a change order to have the abatement company to remove the um asbestos. It is ninety-six thousand forty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Well, we had anticipated this previously that that may be the case. Um, while we certainly aren't excited about an additional hundred thousand dollars, uh, this is something that staff and council had anticipated. And uh needs to happen for the safety of our staff and our community as well as replacing the roof, so. Do we have any public comment? I see that our, our existing public has left the building. Uh, do we have any public on Zoom that has arrived at any of your locations? No, uh, any questions from council members on this?
I would make a question for Chris and maybe uh, Mr. Stanbaugh. Is that quality for any brownfield? Grant? I don't know if it.
Um, I, I would have to get a check. It could, it possibly could be.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I always search for a buck somewhere, but I don't know. If it's not doable, that's fine, it is what it is.
It'd be worth looking at to see if we can get something retroactively.
I mean, I, we, I'm working with Siskiyou County Economic Development on a number of projects, including plant for strategic planning. But they did have their brownfield group walking around downtown uh on Monday, so I can always ask them.
Okay, sounds good.
I know that um we all anticipated that there might be asbestos throughout the roof, but. Um, when we did the original testing, did we ask only for spot testing? And how is it that it only, it came to that nine hundred square feet or whatever it was? Um, was that because we failed to ask for the full testing or do we think that whoever we contracted didn't do it correctly?
So what ended up taking place is that when I contacted this company, I let them know exactly what um. The project that was taking place. Uh, I left it to their expertise on what to test. Unfortunately, they only tested about uh one section of the roof. Um, they did take core samples. They took about nine samples altogether. Um, majority of it was around the outer edge. There was one um that actually had to pertain to the roof. And that was only on one side of the roof. Um, unfortunately, uh, yeah, the abatement company did state that they did not do. A very thorough job on testing.
And how much did we pay them to do that?
I do not have those numbers right um with me tonight. But I can't get you those numbers.
I see Jill moving quickly.
Yes.
So they missed it?
It's going to take me a minute because I gotta get logged into our accounting, but I, I'll look that up.
I just, it, I think it probably needs to be reviewed and determine whether or not. We need to kindly ask for a refund from their failure.
I already ha- I asked, as you know, I already asked for, Chris has already sent me the contract. I just have not reviewed it yet. So I will be reviewing it and see and talking to them when I get back on Monday.
I, I just wanted to also point out um in reviewing the change order that a portion of that change order is for. Um, a follow-up with um health consultants for the um roofers that were removing the asbestos. Um, to determine if there was any, if they suffered any harm from not being professionally prepared to remove asbestos. And not realizing what they were removing. Um, the additional concern is. City Hall was also not prepared. Um, for, did not realize and was not prepared, as in we had windows open. Um, heating and ventilation, air conditioning running throughout the building. So there could be some additional. Um, maybe health follow-up costs with that.
We ma- we need to make sure that. I talked to Chris about it and he's, we need to make sure that the staff is safe. This is safe. And if we have to, to move them out of the building for whatever length of time or some, something we should look into. But if it's going to be safely done, then, then I'm good with that, but. It's important for me for them to, we've already went through all the mold for years. So that's all I'm saying is to make sure that the staff and the people coming in and. So that's all I'm saying, is to make sure that the staff and, and the people coming in and out of this building are safe, while this is being.
We had those conversations, Mark, with the contractor that's there, and they assured us that they would, even though it was a snag in the plan, they did assure us that they could do it without.
I'm counting on it.
All right, so staff has cleared direction and action, follow-up on the previous inspection, um, do we have any other discussion or questions on the, motion, the change order?
No, I make a motion to, uh, approve Resolution Thirty-seven, Twenty Twenty-Five, the task order.
I'll second.
Oh, hold on, that's the wrong one.
One second.
Yeah, this is just the, uh, motion for the change order for the asbestos remediation.
I adopt that language and I move to adopt it.
I will second. All right, we'll vote via roll call.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Councilmember Paffini?
Yes.
Councilmember Verison? Councilmember Westing?
She said yes, I saw her, I saw her that moved, she said yes.
Mayor Parham.
Aye. All right, motion carries by unanimous consent, uh, we'll now move on to staff reports, and we'll start with Chief Carter.
All right, uh, over the last month, uh, we had seventy-eight calls, uh, they're covered by two full-time personnel, seven resident firefighters, and one volunteer. Uh, this last Sunday, we had one new resident firefighter move in. Um, on Monday, five of our resident firefighters and one volunteer started the COS Fire Academy, that's exciting. Uh, the firefighters that were assigned to the Garnet Fire as part of a rapid extrication module returned on September twenty-fifth, after a successful assignment. Um, and then, as you guys are all already aware, uh, September twenty-eighth, around ten twenty, our department, along with many others, responded to the main fire. Uh, firefighters took immediate action to suppress the fire, and were up against heavy fire upon arrival. These firefighters pushed themselves to the limits to save and protect life and property. Uh, by the end of the incident, we had fourteen different fire departments and four different law enforcement agencies respond, including CHP, Lake Shastina PD, Sheriff's Department, and Weed PD, uh, with the equipment from CalFire Siskiyou Unit, including one division chief, three battalion chiefs, one prevention, seven fire engines, two helicopters, one air attack plane, and two air trailers. The Clamath National Forest provided one battalion chief and one water tender. Uh, Lake Shastina Fire Department, one chief and two fire engines, Mount Shasta Fire Department, one chief, one engine, and two water tenders. Uh, May Ten Fire Department, one engine and one water tender. South Orica Fire Department, one engine and one water tender. Gazelle Fire Department, one engine, Mount Shasta ambulance, one ambulance, Dunsmere Fire Department, one truck and one water tender. Orica City, one truck, uh, we provided three fire engines, eight firefighters, and one chief. Um, and if I didn't mention, I think I, I don't think I did, but Fort Jones Fire Department sent one engine, and McLeod Fire Department sent one engine. As you can tell, this fire was a collaboration between many different agencies, and it's through this collaboration that the damage was limited to the five buildings on Main Street. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you to all the departments I mentioned before, and, uh, to the city staff and Public Works for working together and sending their equipment and personnel. Uh, their work is more than appreciated, and I'm honored to see such selfless work done to protect our community. And that is all I have to report, thanks.
Thank you, Director Porterfield.
Nothing else for me this evening, thanks.
Thank you, Director Davis.
Only thing I got is I'd like to thank, um, Timberworks for coming in, um, the following day, um, with their excavator to help go through the rubble, um, to make sure that the fire was completely out. They did put off a project that they were supposed to work on that day to come and give us a hand.
Sergeant Complarence.
I have nothing to report for me.
All right, City Clerk.
No report this time, thank you.
All right, uh, we'll go to our city attorney and save our city manager for last.
I have no report this evening, thank you for that.
All right, and City Manager Stanbaugh?
I just wanted to s, to say once again how thankful I am to be a part of the team. I'm the newcomer, and the staff and council, uh, y'all are wonderful, so thank you. Uh, it's an honor to watch them work during the fire, it just shows, uh, how dedicated they are, I was very impressed. Um, I've got a good crew, and, uh, I, I just am thankful to be here, thank you, Mr..
All right, well, well, thank you, we appreciate your leadership.
We appreciate you being here, yeah.
Joining our team, so.
Thank you.
All right, um, at this point, I will accept the motion to adjourn to closed session.
I so move.
Do we have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
All right, and we'll take a.
On that motion?
Do we have any, uh, public comment? We don't have any public here, how about, uh, Zoom?
Nope.
All right.
Roll call.
We'll, roll call vote.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Councilmember Paffini? Councilmember Verison? Councilmember Westing?
Yes.
Mayor Parham?
Aye. All right, motion carries, we will now, uh, move to closed session.